Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters Grand Travers County Commissioner Candidate Forum. We are honored tonight to have fourteen of the seventeen candidates for county commission with us this evening. The commission is expanding from seven to nine districts and voters will vote for one candidate to represent their district. Note that your district may not be the same as it was in previous years. I'm Anne McGoon, your moderator for tonight's forum. Our timers are league members Nancy and Norm Nordfjord. The league very much appreciates Zoom support from Traverse area community media. The League of Women Voters Grand Travers area is a grassroots, nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose political candidates or parties. The league strongly believes that democracy is not a spectator sport. We sponsor this forum tonight because it is our mission to promote and facilitate the active and informed participation of citizens in all levels of government. We want you to hear these candidates tell you why they are running for office for this office and how they would deal with the issues facing Grand Travers County. Questions have been submitted for the forum through the local League of Women Voters Facebook page and website. Also during the forum, the audience can submit questions using the question and answer feature on your screen if you are watching through Zoom or by making a comment on the League of Women Voters Grand Travers area Facebook page. Any questions not asked this evening will be shared after the forum with the candidates to help them know what other questions and concerns people have for the commission. Members of the league have screened the questions for clarity, general interest, relevance, and propriety. The League of Women Voters is providing this opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed tonight by the candidates are not endorsed or opposed by the league. Also, the League of Women Voters does not certify the accuracy of any of the candidate responses. Voters are encouraged to fact check information shared at this forum. So let's review quickly tonight's format. Each candidate will have up to ninety seconds to introduce herself or himself and to answer the question. What do you believe are the three most pressing concerns for Grand Travers County? Then we will start with questions for each candidate. Each candidate will have thirty seconds to answer a question. At the end, they will have ninety seconds for a closing statement. Candidates are reminded to restrict answers to their position on the question asked and not to make any swipes at other candidates. If candidates are in agreement with what has already been said, they are encouraged not to repeat at length. That way we can get to more topics. The timekeepers will alert candidates by holding up a sign first for the ninety second beginning and ending. At thirty seconds, the candidates will get a warning. And during during the question and answers, they will get a ten second warning. And then also at the end of their time, they will get a stop sign. Candidates may finish their thought briefly and then they must end their response. If a candidate does not end promptly, they will be muted. As much as possible, candidate responses are going to be grouped by district so that, for example, both candidates for District Two will answer a question before moving to candidates from another district. This will work for most of the questions, but not all the way through. If time allows, each candidate will have the opportunity to speak first. We're going to pack in as many questions as we can in this timeframe. So tonight we will begin with opening statements with Ms. Koenig. Be sure to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Ellen Koenig. I'm a hardworking wife, mother, and friend and neighbor. I've worked in the hospitality industry as a server. I've also worked in an art studio and advertising and marketing. I've sorted cherries, owned a daycare and a wreath business, sold flowers and herbs at the farmer's market. I've been a nursing home aide. I homeschool my children, taught Sunday school, and just recently I helped bring the governor's great debate and grand ball to Traverse City this past spring. In recent years, I attended NMC, studying computer programming, graphic arts, and the UAV piloting program. Forty-five years that I've lived in Traverse City, I have worked, raised my family, and volunteered with the best friends and neighbors you could ever ask for. I'm running because I want to take the policies that we have to influence upcoming with all the new growth. I've been here a long time. I've seen good decisions and not so good decisions. And I want to put all that wisdom and experience to use.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Hi, everyone. Welcome. Thank you so much for having us. First of all, I'd like to say good yentav to my fellow Jewish community members who are ending this yom kippur. I wish you well wishes. I'd also like to give a shout out to my mom who's celebrating a milestone birthday. I love you. My name is Lauren Flynn. I'm running to represent the constituents of District Two on the Grand Travers County Commission. As a single mother and a professional raising two my raising my two daughters in our county, I have personally been affected by some of the crises in our area. I look forward to working hard to create and expand workforce housing, ensuring quality mental health care is available to all, that working families have access to affordable childcare and early learning programs, and that businesses have what they need to acquire, enhance, and preserve employees to support our economy. We need new ideas, plans, and actions to solve these issues. And from my experience, building a team of diverse people with different backgrounds and different experiences brings different ideas and new solutions to the table. And when you vote for me and for the other new voices for the Board of Commissions, that is what is going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh. Be sure to unmute, please.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Joe Welsh. I make ice cream for a living. I train young people in the marketplace. I've been doing that actually for a long time. I grew up in Marquette and I never I never realized, I never thought that I'd wind up in Traverse City and I honestly, full disclosure, I wound up in Traverse City as a result of a unplanned pregnancy. And I'm the proud father of a twenty-year-old who's a junior at Michigan Tech. And I'm just so grateful that we had our baby because she has just been the biggest blessing in my life by far. And I want to encourage other people to make that choice. I'm running for county commission because this area has been really good to me. And we have, in my opinion, we have a really good budget surplus and we need to maintain that. I think that we need conservative leadership that can maintain that. We especially need to maintain and protect our national resources and support our local business networks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, please unmute.
Thanks to the League of Women Voters and for, full disclosure, if it makes a difference. My wife Susan Rogers and I just rejoined the league as a family membership. I've been living here in Traverse City since nineteen eighty-seven. My education is business mostly from Ferris and Grand Valley, but actually went to more than one college. I was the county commissioner. I got elected in twenty sixteen as a Green Party person on the ballot. And I defeated Christine Maxbauer, who was the county board chair at the time, a formidable foe. But I was able to do that. And at that time on the board, there were seven. And there were six Republicans and one Green. I have sort of adapted a little bit to saying I'm an independent Green at this point because I really want to focus on the fact that I'm independent of the two major parties. And one of the reasons I'm running is because I still see discord on the board where people attack each other. And the rules of play, in my opinion, are to leave all that political party business to the side and work as a group, not to attack, try to embarrass people, all that negative stuff, which also appears in the ads on television, which totally against. I'm sort of busting myths as well. When I won in sixteen, I won on just under a thousand dollars and I'm keeping my campaign to a thousand dollars this time. And that's not only to show that I use my money wisely, but I would do the same thing if I was using the tax dollars as well. I'm very conservative on the line. Thank you.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you so much. My name is Ashley Walter and I'm running for District Three, which covers the west part of Traverse City and part of Garfield Township. I'm the current elected city commissioner for Traverse City and live in downtown Traverse City with my family. As a commissioner, I have additional appointments to the Arts Commission, Brown Bridge Advisory, and the Joint Rock Authority with Garfield Township. As an elected official, I've worked with nonprofits and businesses to implement creative solutions to our housing crisis and prioritize sewer and water infrastructure improvements to protect our watershed. So why the focus on the county now? Well, the majority on the board has been focused on national issues and spending time on things like giving away our county park land, buying a completely unnecessary military style vehicle, and censoring our public health department during a global pandemic. In contrast, I will work to better the lives of our local people by providing much-needed leadership on our urgent regional issues, affordable housing, childcare, mental health, and facing a crumbling infrastructure that threatens our environment we hold sacred. I appreciate your vote and thank you so much for having us tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scott?
Hi, thanks everyone for being here and to the candidates for showing up tonight. My name's Amanda Scott. I live in Fife Lake with my husband David, our son Silas, who actually just turned one this weekend, and our three dogs. I've spent the past ten years working for local nonprofits and serving on local boards, including more than seven years serving on planning commissions and housing committees. I grew up here in Grand Travers County. My mom was a nanny and my dad was a union carpet installer. We didn't always have a lot of money and we moved around a lot. I lived in eight houses before I was ten years old and went to six different elementary schools. I then worked three jobs to put myself through college, starting here at NMC before graduating from Michigan State's James Madison College. Go Green. I've since dedicated my career and most of my free time to service. I worked at Child and Family Services, a local nonprofit, for the past seven years. And in two thousand eighteen, I helped launch their new workforce development program, Youth Work. We teach job and life skills to young people by going out into our community, building trails, planting trees, and fixing up our local parks. I'm running so that we can stop the nonsense and political games that I've been seeing on our county board. I promise to put people over politics, get back to work on real issues that matter for our county and for working people. Housing, mental health, childcare, infrastructure, and workforce development and retention. Thanks for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
All right, I've got to slide over and find the timekeeper. Okay, there, she keeps moving. Hi, my name is Daryl Nelson. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Traverse area community media for putting this on tonight. This is a very helpful thing for people. I'm running for reelection. I'm an incumbent county commissioner in District Six. That's kind of the eastern side of Grand Travers County. And it has been my honor and pleasure to serve in a role as county commissioner, something I never saw myself doing. I'm a native of Traverse City. I raised my family in Traverse City. My family came here in nineteen forty-seven. I'm a third generation business owner in this community. And this community has been very good to me. One of the things I've found in this job with my longevity, I've been on a lot of nonprofit boards and state boards through personal, through business, through school events. I've gotten to know an awful lot of people, some of the people I've known since we were young. And in this role, I have met so many that we're working on an issue and it's somebody that I went to school with or somebody I worked with before. And we have been handed a great community from our previous leaders. It's our job to continue that. There's nobody I can't work with. I work with all seven of the commissioners on the board. Politics stays outside the building. We do our job and our job is to work with one another. And I'm very proud of our accomplishments at the board in the last two years.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Traverse Media for hosting this candidates forum. I am Wayne Schmidt. I'm running for District Seven, which is the east side of the city, Eight and Nine, and all of the peninsulas, precincts one and two. It's been my privilege and honor to serve as a commissioner before and also as a state senator and a state representative. The real things about this race are a question of relationships and results. It's about public service, people, and policy over any party affiliation. The three main areas that I think we need to continue to focus on here in Grand Travers County is infrastructure, our water and sewer, protecting our natural resources. That is critical. Housing is key. This county can certainly play a role in bringing people together, bringing units of government together, and that relationship with the state also is very critical. And then thirdly is childcare. Again, those relationships of the TCAPs and the schools working together, public and nonprofit agencies working together, we can address many of the issues facing Northern Michigan, specifically Grand Travers County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Good evening. My name is TJ Andrews. I'm the Democrat running for county commission District Seven, which is the Old Mission Peninsula and northeastern quarter of the city. I'm personally and professionally invested in our community and in this district. I'm a mom of two kids. They go to Eastern Elementary and East Middle School. I'm an environmental attorney. I speak up for clean water before local boards and decision makers in our watershed. I am an open water swimmer and I have led nonpartisan campaigns to hold officials accountable to voters. I'm also a volunteer with the Free Legal Services Clinic and several local organizations. Our county must address these pressing community issues. First, supporting the people who live and work here. That means housing and childcare and mental health services that are accessible and affordable to everyone. These are inherently regional issues. They require county leadership. Second is good government. We see decisions made in the dark, meetings held at the most inconvenient times, disrespect for public comment, and weak ethics policies. We must do better. And third, we need a comprehensive strategic plan for this county. Without short and long-term goals and plans to get there, the budget is set without direction. We miss opportunities to support our partners who are working on housing and childcare, workforce development, and transport. We can leverage state and federal resources, but it starts with a strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris Kaiser? Please unmute yourself, Ms. Harris Kaiser.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Pam Harris Kaiser. I live in Long Lake Township and I'm proud to represent it as a Democratic candidate for the Board of Commissioners. I am a fourth-generation resident of Grand Travers County. My family began on a farm in Thompsonville. My father became a teacher after attending NMC and I followed suit. I have a master's degree in American Studies and in school counseling. I have worked as a college instructor, a high school instructor, and a counselor. I care about this community and its people and the beautiful natural environment, which makes this place so unique and is attracting people from all over the world to live here. With growth comes opportunity and with opportunity comes responsibility. I seek to protect the people by rescinding the dangerous Second Amendment sanctuary designation that was adopted by the Grand Travers County Republicans in March of two thousand twenty. This ultimately ended up costing my twenty-four-year-old son his life when a local gun shop did not close down during the pandemic when he was experiencing high levels of anxiety and depression. So mental health is number one on my list.
Second is supporting families. And third is treating people with humanity. Thank you very much. Ms. Morris?
I'll start off with a little-known fact. Maybe it's not a little-known fact, but I am a belly dance instructor. I have taught belly dancing for women as a women's empowerment for the past fifteen years. It was my business. So when you see the belly dancers around at our Grand Travers County festivals in Lelandaw and all of the surrounding, those are my ladies. I'm very proud of them. I've taught them to love themselves through through this empowerment that started before the written language. So I've lived in Traverse City for thirty years. I've raised my kids here. I'm very proud to be a resident of Long Lake Township, District Nine. And I've seen many, many changes. One thing has remained the same. We live in a wonderful community full of great people who really, all they want is to build a life that is blossoming with opportunities for their families. So I found out how great our community was thirty eighteen years ago when my daughter lost her life because a repeat offender fell through the cracks of bureaucracy. I see the same cracks and bureaucracy that happen now. The red tape that prevents access to mental health services and substance use disorders and other services that are desperately needed like housing and childcare. And I really appreciate the opportunity to continue to represent my district in these very much needed issues that we can solve.
Thank you. Mr. Fashbaugh?
Hi, I'm David Fashbaugh. I'm running for District Four, County Commission. I've lived in the county my whole life. Couple of years I lived in Mount Pleasant in high school and junior high. Parents were divorced. But for the most part, I've been here my whole life. My family's been here for probably four or five generations. Much longer on one side of the family. My grandmother was a rollercoaster maid. Her mother's maiden name was Lautner, so that goes way back. But I think that the county needs some changes in the system that we have right now. There's too much politics that gets played in the county commission. There's a job that needs to be done. It needs to be taken care of for the people of the county. We need to have the medical, the community mental health system fixed or replaced or whatever we need to do to get that solved. We need affordable, sustainable housing. And we need to replace the old adage of a view of the bay is half the pay. We need to change it to a rising tide raises all ships. That'll solve a lot of problems in our county.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I'm Bruce Moore. I'm running for county commission in District Five, which is roughly the north half of East Bay Township and the south half of Acme Township. I'm a retired mathematical modeling practitioner and project manager. I grew up in Mount Pleasant and earned a chemical engineering degree from the University of Michigan. After school, I went to work for IBM in Kingston, New York, and later transferred to Dallas where I spent the rest of my working life. At IBM, I worked in consulting groups doing database, document imaging, and finally data warehousing and data mining projects. Along the way, I earned two master's degrees and a doctor of engineering. I returned to Michigan in two thousand eighteen after we went through what amounted to a business school site selection problem that led us to Traverse City. Through our church, I volunteer at Safe Harbor and I've seen the housing problems in our community. And I've talked to many recent graduates and workers about their problems finding housing. I've talked to couples about childcare that costs more than their mortgage. We need to work on these local problems instead of wasting time on pointless Second Amendment and anti-vax resolutions. In the thirty years I lived in Dallas, the metroplex grew from about two million to eight million people and I saw many early decisions that didn't look so spiffy over time. I look forward to a better future for our community through strategic planning and paying attention to local issues. I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert?
Hi, yes, thank you for everyone making this possible. My name's Scott Seifert. I represent District Eight, which is predominantly the south part of the county, which would be Paradise Township, including the Village Kingsley, Grant Township, Mayfield Township, and a sliver of Blair Township. I graduated from high school here, went to NMC here. That was high school and there was one high school. And my three most important issues. Well, the first one's going to be infrastructure. We have crumbling roads. We have bridges that need repair. It's just people can't get to work to pay their taxes, which boils into the second thing that I believe that we need really, really careful with the money that we've gotten from the federal government, the state, and not be spending on pet projects. But fixing that infrastructure is where it's allowed to, kind of actually what it's designed for. And the third thing really goes hand in hand with everything else that people have been saying is like, as a blue collar representative, we should be getting our money's worth, the taxes we're paying. We pay an exorbitant amount of taxes, but I'm not seeing an exorbitant amount of services. But I am seeing an awful lot of pet projects and a lot of big things. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements. Now we're going to go right to the questions and remember thirty seconds for your response. And if you need me to repeat the question, please let me know. First, we'll start with Mr. Welsh. And our first question is, Grand Travers commissioners have required committee assignments such as Board of Public Works, Farmland Preservation, Parks and Recreation, and so on. What committee would you like to be assigned to and why? Mr. Welsh, please unmute. Please unmute.
That's a really good question. I, you know, I would be open to looking at all of them. I think that Parks and Rec is a good one. Anything that, you know, I mean, it's all, it's all going to depend on where you get assigned. My, what I would want to do is be extremely efficient with wherever I went and make really good decisions in whichever committees that I was on.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
Thank you so much. This is a great question because it is kind of surprising for people when they get into public office that there are a lot of other assignments that come your way and gives you a great perspective on the complexity of our issues. The first one that comes to mind for me, however, is the land bank. There is a lot of opportunity that we have to help solve our housing crisis through the land bank. And that jumps up to the top of the list for me.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, in two thousand eighteen, I sat on the County Parks and Rec Commission. And prior to that, starting in two thousand two, I served six years on the city parks and rec. That's two terms of three. So I definitely know about the parks and I'm concerned about the dismantling of the park system. I'm also concerned about the use of certain parks and whether they, in the city at least, and I know this isn't our business, but in the city, if you change a park, you have to take it to a public vote. Now, maybe the county should consider something like that. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, well, let me talk about in the thirty seconds I have, two of the committees I currently serve on as an incumbent. One of them is very One of them is very exciting and that's the Department of Public Works. And it's only exciting if we do something wrong, if we have a problem and everyone knows about it. And it has to do with infrastructure. It's very expensive. There's a lot of pre-planning. And I've learned a lot. I, as a former trustee in a township role, I. Learned a lot about it. And my other job is on the Airport Authority, which is exciting.
Thank you. Ms. Scott.
Yeah, I really wish that I could say the Planning Commission or the Housing Committee, but since we don't have either of those, I would say I would like to work with the Community Mental Health Board or the Parks and Recreation Board. Because I'm worried about the future of both of those and I have a lot of experience working with both through my work, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, please unmute.
Thank you. Several, when we first created the Land Bank Authority, when I was County Board Chair, I would like to serve on that again. Department of Public Works and also the CMH Board Member. Did that for 10 years and. Certainly, the relationships that I've developed be key in helping move that process along. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, please unmute.
Yes, so I serve on the Parks Board and I also serve on the Pavilions and DHHS Boards. And I'm also on the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board. Where, as you know, we've made a lot of changes, we're working on making more changes. I believe that everybody. Deserves the right to mental health services and accessible, affordable and. And the things that we need that we're not getting.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, did I give you a chance to respond to that question? You did not. I'm sorry. Your turn.
Thank you. I would first advocate that we reform the Grand Traverse Regional Housing Task Force that existed in 2014 and 15 that brought together the townships. In the shouldering states and nonprofits to directly address housing in our community. That was an effective. Board in moving barriers and we should put it back together. Short of getting that in place, I would support the Brownfield redevelopment. And the land bank, but I think we're going to have some competition for those seats. So.
Thank you. Ms. Harris Kaiser.
I would use my expertise to continue serving on a mental health board to bring needed residential beds. With Munson Hospital and Northern Lakes Community Mental Health for our region. We have a terrible shortage of beds. Many people end up in our jail when they really need mental health care. And secondly, I would like to serve on the Parks Committee and keep Twin Lakes in the Grand Traverse Park System. Long Lake Township cannot afford to support that park.
Thank you. Mr. Fashbaugh.
Yes, I'd be interested in the land bank and board and the. Community mental health. My experience as a labor rep sitting on health plans and so forth, I think that'll help. Use that as a strategy for funding that community mental health.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
My background in operations research would be a good fit for both the airport and Public Works. I would also be interested in. The land bank and the Brownfield Authority from a housing perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert.
Yes, thank you. I really don't have any preferred preferences. I have, you know, my strengths and weaknesses and everything, excuse me. But I'm going to do the best job I can, whichever is available to me.
Appreciate. Thank you. Ms. Koenig. Please unmute, Ms. Koenig. Ms. Koenig, please unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying I, to myself, I would like to work with the senior population. We, it's growing here and we're getting a lot of new transplants also, so it's a very. Big issue and it's going to continue to be such. We're getting a new senior center down on the bay and that's going to be a critical process and I want to help work with the Commission on Aging and. Continue the excellent work they've been doing.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
With so many veterans in my life and family, I would love to sit on, and the respect I have for veterans, I would love to sit on the Veterans Affairs Committee. As well as the Health and Human Service Committee, as I know what great services they offer young families in need in our county.
Thank you. Appreciate your quick responses, everybody, and paying attention. Next question, and with this, we'll start with Ms. Scott. Is there any issue on which you disagree with the decisions of the current county commission? If so, what would you have decided on that decision and why? 30 seconds, Ms. Scott.
Oh, yes, I can think of a lot, but I guess I will stick with. The recent decision on Northern Lakes. I definitely agree that something should have been done here, but I think it should have been handled a much different way. We should have brought a lot more people to the table before making any kind of rash decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Well, I don't know if I answered the question how I disagree with the recent decisions as an incumbent. I guess. I, I'm proud we've done some really heavy lifts. We have taken on problems that most of the boards haven't taken on. When we see an issue. We have gone after it. Community Mental Health is a great example. It's been very collaborative. We're working with a lot of different players. And we have committed to having a good outcome.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews.
I would start with the decision to give away the Twin Lakes Park to Long Lake Township. That decision was made, as far as I can tell, behind closed doors without public process and input. And that's an asset that benefits our whole county that should belong to the whole county.
Thank you. Ms. Harris Kaiser.
Yes, without a doubt, the worst mistake I've ever seen in public policy was watching. Our Board of Commissioners adopt the Proud Boys motion to make us a Second Amendment Sanctuary. This meant that my son was able to get a hold of a gun during the pandemic shutdown. He was found hours later dead in our car. This should never have happened. If, if our leadership. Makes bad decisions, the rest of the system will make bad decisions. We need to be safe in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I think the first thing would be is refocusing the board. On local and state issues rather than those of a national level. And when I mean state, making sure that we're participating there. In things that we control or the county board participates in. And also, I would reconsider the. The sale or the turning over of Twin Lakes to Long Lake Township. Did not agree with that decision.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
So, it's of note that, I remember I used to think about my predecessor. Oh, I would never have made the decisions that he made, but when I got on the board, I realized that I didn't have all the information that he had to make those decisions with. And so, I try to temper that when, when people disagree with, with what we have to work with. But I'll be honest, there have been a few times when I have voted against my own opinion. Because my township or my constituents wanted me to vote a different way. And so, I try to keep in mind. That I work for them, not for me.
Mr. Fashbaugh.
Yes, I would like to. See the decision that they bought, bought the armored vehicle for the police department with little foresight into how they're going to man that vehicle. After they purchased it. And I also don't agree with the Twin Lakes transfer.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
I, I disagree with the approach that the current board is taking to dealing with the problems at Northern Lakes. I think they've taken a fire-ready aim approach to dealing with that problem. The anti-vax resolution hamstrung our health department during the worst month of the pandemic and forced our, our. School system to take advice from a different health department. The Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. Sent the wrong message to people of color to come to this area.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert.
Hi, yes, thank you. If I had to disagree with any. Decision, probably with the Bearcat purchase or the armored car by the Sheriff's Department. Having said that, I'm not a big fan of dwelling on past decisions that I wasn't involved or informed in. Because when I do that, I have a tendency to believe that it discolors our view of the future.
Thank you. Ms. Koenig.
I'm more in favor of the decisions that I've seen this board make than I am of decisions, than against decisions. I really appreciate them taking care of. The Hartman-Hammond Bridge issue and bringing that up. That's 50 years I've watched that go on. They've worked hard along with Mr. Schmidt to get the senior center funding and a number of other things. I, I find this board doing a lot of good work.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
I do agree with everything my fellow Democrats have agreed with, but what I also like to say is that these decisions were made without communication with community leaders. And stakeholders, without listening to what the members of the community want and without compassion for all the constituents of every district. And those are three things I will bring to the Grand Traverse County Board. Strong communication, great listening skills and compassion for all.
Thank you. Ms. Walter.
Thank you. Well, in one meeting in particular. The board voted on a budget after less than 30 minutes of discussion, which to me was. Completely crazy idea considering how much time and effort needs to go into discussing the public. The budget in public with how our values might align with how we spend money. In that same meeting, that $300,000 was spent on Bearcat. So, completely also disagree with that unnecessary spend of money.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, well, I'm very conservative when it comes to spending money and I'll say two things that are votes that I'd like to be reversed. One is disposal of the Twin Lakes. Now, there's a glitch in that. That may not even work out because it needs a brand new roof, which is very expensive. It needs new siding, which is very expensive as well to make it up to par. I also believe, since I was on the Jail Ad Hoc Committee, that we need to return two full-time professional mental health workers to the jail. The fact that. We got them in in 2018 and now they're not there. I just can't understand that at all.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh.
Well, I was very disappointed with the current commission having brought very. Common sense measures to the commission over a number of meetings during the public comment sections this summer. About election integrity, simple things. Election integrity is not a partisan issue. It's a matter of state and national security. And they wouldn't agenda me, so I totally disagree with, with how they handle that situation.
Thank you. We're moving on to our next question and this one will begin with Mr. Schmidt. What should the county do to expedite access to broadband services to all parts of the county? Mr. Schmidt.
I'll continue to cooperate with those providers that offer broadband services. Again, with all the money that is at the state and federal level, it's going to take that coordinated effort and relationships. But it's going to be working with those, those companies that currently provide the service and also the municipalities. As those are the individual places where that broadband service is going to be put. We at the county have somewhat of a limited role, but more of a coordinating role in helping move that forward.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews.
I would agree with Mr. Schmidt. We have a role at the county to coordinate. The municipalities where broadband is insufficient at the time. We have unprecedented, unprecedented levels of federal. Funding that is directly to address this through the infrastructure. The infrastructure bill that passed earlier this year. We need to be amplifying the voices of the communities that need that funding.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
Going to go ahead and agree with all of my predecessors. No other comment needed.
Thank you. Ms. Harris Kaiser.
Obviously, we wouldn't be able to have this meeting tonight if we didn't all live in a place that had sufficient broadband access. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to bring us to the 21st century. I think we need to work carefully with our townships and our districts to know where the dark spots are and give everyone access to broadband.
Thank you. Mr. Fashbaugh.
Yes, broadband is very important. We, we've already been through it once. With rural electrification, there's policies there that we can learn from. In the 40s, we didn't have electricity in rural areas. That's what made our country grow. That there should be things there that we could use to expand our broadband.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
I, I think the county can play a role in helping to prioritize the needs across the county because. The parts of the county that, that have the biggest problems are the smallest townships who have the fewest resources. For doing grant applications and things like that. And I think that's an area where. The county can play a role in this is in helping some of the smaller townships. We could also help with, you know, piggybacking fixed wireless over some of the antennas that the county owns.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert.
Yes, I, I concur there with Mr. Moore and Mr. Schmidt that the county should play. Coordinating role and focus on the poorer and the smaller municipalities without the resources.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
I do agree with most of the speakers ahead of me. We do need to work together with local townships to do so. We do understand how important this is more so now that we've seen our children really have to spend most of their time with their broadband to, to earn their education.
Ms. Koenig.
Well, I applaud TCLP and the work they've done to bring optical and wonderful. Internet services to the city, but the rural areas probably need to be looked at. I'm not real familiar with their needs, but I think that's something we should. Look into if there's needs and there's money out there.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd start with grade school. Find out how many people don't have service so that they can do their homework and be up on their studies. You can use a MiFi device for about $50 a month. It doesn't require having a cable attached to your house. You can go wireless. Verizon, AT&amp;T, and I would get money out of the ARPA fund. Just get on with it. I mean, we have to start putting MiFi devices into children's hands so that they can do their work at school.
Ms. Walter.
Yes, we saw this as a huge socioeconomic divide issue during the lockdown. I have two kids in TCAP schools and we heard from kids all over our huge district. There is a huge divide in access to the internet and that hasn't improved much. We have a great opportunity. As a county to lead on this issue, not just coordinate, but to lead and. Work with our infrastructure funds that are available to further this issue to protect our families.
Mr. Welsh.
Going to make it really easy for service providers to get to areas that need service. And you have to be very discerning in what areas need what type of service, what exact type of need that they have. So, there is an overspending on pet projects.
Thank you. Ms. Scott.
Yeah, I can speak to that well. Here in Five Lake where I live and often work from internet connection is through unreliable mobile hotspot. You'll notice that my theme throughout tonight is the idea of bringing people together, using tools that we already have and looking at other communities' experiences and using that to our advantage. Our neighbors in the county have already started tackling this. Let's look at what they're doing and using power to get more providers out here in our area.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Ms. Harris Kaiser. What role does the county have in encouraging and sustaining affordable housing for local employees and the businesses that hire them? Ms. Harris Kaiser.
You have hit upon the perennial problem of you by the bay. We don't have enough housing to support our local working residents and taxpayers. I believe that we can offer incentives and make sure that they are honored. By the builders, by writing in clauses that you cannot sell a subsidized building. That you've built condominiums in such as recently happened near the library.
Thank you. Ms. Morris.
So, I think one of our best roles is the ability to collaborate between our townships. So I think one of our best roles is the ability to collaborate between our townships and the county and and zoning. And um, one of the things that we're doing out here in Long Lake is we're looking at bringing in municipal water from Garfield Township. So what this can do is actually help create a situation where we can, where we need less land to um, for sewer and septic, so we can build more density. So those are some practical things we're working on as far as um.
Thank you, Mr. Fashbaugh.
I forgot the question.
The question is about the role of the county in encouraging and sustaining affordable housing.
Oh, yes. Um, my role is a business manager and union rep for my workers that work under our our collective bargaining agreement. That's where I get the uh, all tides raised or heightened. Yeah, I'm all tongue tied now, but uh.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Miss, you muted, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Uh, the the first thing is really to to reconstitute the planning department of county uh, to help with with really a plan for the county. Um, we need to do appointments to the land bank and the brownfield uh, commissions so that that housing becomes a priority for those two uh, boards. And I think we need to have better use of an existing county fund. It's really used to help rehabilitate housing.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Uh, yes, um. What role does the county have in encouraging and sustaining affordable housing for local employees and the businesses that hire them?
Hmm. I'm not sure that they do. Housing and job markets historically have been self correcting and the self correction is usually delayed by the more interference of the government goods. And quite frankly, affordable housing is relative. Affordable housing for somebody that makes sixty thousand dollars a year is not the same as somebody that makes forty five thousand dollars a year. It's clearly been stated in all the reports and things that are going on. So I don't know that they have a role. Maybe they've had too much role and they should step back.
Thank you, um, Ms. Koenig.
Well, one of the things I'm excited about is we do have a supply and demand shortage and there is a lot of housing coming online within the next year. And I'm really hoping that that should help alleviate a lot of these issues. Um, and as a county board member, I I will look at long and hard at any areas that we can influence to promote more affordable housing market going forward and to unburden the construction community from any government obstacles that may be in place.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Uh, this is a huge issue that I believe that once is relieved, it will uh, we can also face our other issues like talent attraction and workforce shortage. Uh, there are things that we can do. We communicate with other local governments and create possible partnerships such as joint powers authority. Um, these, this might not be the right answer for us, but we're not fixing a problem that the rest of the country doesn't have or a lot of other places. But this is like this idea and other ideas really need to be discussed and brainstormed to solve the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there was a planning department and the the county board dissolved it, which was quite a sad moment, actually. But as well as we used to have a county planner too, which we don't have anymore. But if you're really going to be serious about housing, you have to identify that there's more than just the affordable lower priced places that we need more of. We also need more places for people who are moving in and management jobs because they can't afford to buy either. I mean, the houses have become very expensive.
Thank you.
We need a studio apartment that's in the six to seven hundred dollar range.
Mr. Welsh. Could you unmute, Mr. Welsh?
I mean, as a person who employs people in the twenty five to thirty dollar range, this affects me directly. Um, I think that if we're going to approve developments for affordable housing for affordable apartments um, with incentives for developers, um, they must come with contracts. So they can't just kick the people out a few years later and sell the units off as condos. That's definitely not going to work for for people who are regular folk to make a living in this town.
Thank you, Ms. Walter.
Yes, thank you. I've been working on this issue on the city level and that's what inspired me to run for the county level is that we really need to see this as a regional issue. And I do believe that the county has a role to play in this and we have an opportunity to lead on it, to be a leader, to bring municipalities together. We have a big opportunity with the land bank authority and with um, possibly looking into an affordable housing village like has been done in Kalamazoo County as well as in um, the Ann Arbor area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
Yes, thanks. Uh, housing is my top issue. I have more than seven years experience with planning, zoning and housing, and I feel very very strongly that I can help. Um, I believe in what many organizations are calling a housing first approach that says only when we have enough housing, we'll be able to address anything else, um, employees to live here and work at our businesses. Uh, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. As I said, communities like ours have are already doing this. I have a ton to say and I know I'm going to run out of time, so if you go to vote amandascott.com/housing, you can find at least six things that I think we can do right now. And I'll start until I run out.
Um, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we're fortunate to have that problem in this area because it means that we're growing. Every every successful community in the world has a problem with housing. There's a lag time. We're having a lot of explosive growth of building new housing. Uh, the the county government needs to understand what they can do to help and what they can do to hurt. Uh, a planning commission at the county level is just another roadblock in the way. We need to support in a collaborative role and assist the townships, which we're doing in District Six, an Acme Township project. But sometimes the best thing we do is stay out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. A couple of the key things because zoning is such a local control issue with townships and municipality. We need to continue working with our partners, Housing North, the Traverse City Housing Commission, the Traverse Connect Proposals, and also the Michigan Housing Coalition. We also need to strengthen legislation, something I've been working on at state level to allow the Brownfield Authority and Land Bank Authorities to have more tools, especially in northern Michigan and the Upper Peninsula. Our rural market is different than downstate.
Thank you. Um, and let's see, I think. Um, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. A lot of ideas have been floated that I agree with. I think the key elements are uh, forming an umbrella approach where we tap our municipalities, land bank, uh, private developers, nonprofit development organizations, um, Housing North. All of those groups come together, whether it's in a task force or otherwise. We need to reconstitute planning. Without planning, we're never going to tap into the federal and state resources that have been made available to address this precise issue.
Thank you. Um, our our next question is going to start with Mr. Fashbaugh. And it is uh, kind of a long one. So everybody listen, so I don't have to repeat it too many times to all of you, but it's about the American Rescue Plan Funds. Grand Travers County has access to eighteen point two million dollars in American Rescue Plan Funds that must be spent by December twenty twenty six in the following five categories. COVID nineteen response, economic impacts of COVID, replacing revenue losses from the pandemic, premium pay for eligible workers during the pandemic, and water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. The County Board of Commissioners will evaluate and approve grant applications for these funds. Where do you want those funds to be allocated, Mr. Fashbaugh?
Water, sewer and broadband and then uh, the wages. The wages are, uh, for me personally will solve a lot of problems in the county if we get rid of half of the pay for a year of the day and go to uh, the rising tire rates of all ships.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
My priorities would really be water, sewer and broadband. And also if we can figure out some way uh, to address some of the homelessness issues within the county, that would that would be also be one of my priorities in terms of housing.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert.
Yes, I'm going to have to go with, you know, the infrastructure ones, the water, sewer, broadband. And in some way for all the things that during COVID, time of lockdown, it didn't get done, like the infrastructure, the roads and things like that. That would certainly be my first choice as opposed to pet projects and funding parks and things of that nature.
Thank you, um, Ms. Flynn.
I would prioritize the spending of the eighteen million of ARPA funding uh, to support uh, and executing solutions to solve the housing, access to childcare, mental health programs, and definitely infrastructure. Uh, that's very important and we have so many great advocates in our community already working on these solutions that we would, I would really love to partner with these nonprofits and other groups to ensure that we are going to help them succeed in their projects.
Thank you, Ms. Koenig.
Um, the county is right now accepting applications from people who have ideas of how they want that money spent. And then the commissioners will review that and I'm anxious to see what other people in the community have come up with and what their ideas are before I I make any thought about this because people out there might have some really creative and great ideas on how to spend this money. You have until October thirty first to submit an application to the county. You can find it on the county website.
Thank you, um, Ms. Walter.
Thank you. The priority for me would be to attack our severely underfunded public infrastructure that threatens, I think, what we all hold sacred, our environment. Um, that would be the main thing in addition to expanding broadband as shared earlier to bring more equity across the county to opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I would take uh, at least half of the money, put it towards infrastructure. You know, people might not realize as we build buildings downtown. When the Tom McIntyre Building was put up across the street from Central Methodist, that topped out our capacity to suppress a fire on the upper story of a tall building. So ever since then, everything that's been built since then, there's a question on whether we have enough water service. Now, that's pretty big. Uh, we need to do what was decided in twenty eighteen as part of the Park Place Brownfield Plan. And that put money forward to improve the water system downtown. It's frail.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh.
Well, this type of funding is another example of um, central banking, central planning, kicking the can down the road to our children and grandchildren, strapping them with a ton of debt. So I would want to make sure that there's no strings attached first. And if we're going to continue to accrue debt like this, it would definitely be best spent in infrastructure. Leave our children with something that they actually have rather than a Band-Aid that's that's finished in a year and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we're borrowing money that we don't have from our grandchildren for these ARPA funds. And so we have the responsibility ethically and morally to spend the money on our grandchildren. People are going to be paying that back. That lends itself toward long term projects uh, such as infrastructure or anything else, but I'm working on probably four or five different ones myself in my district. Uh, fire and safety, one is long term, uh, youth, uh, recreation and infrastructure that will help housing and those type of things. So there's not enough time to talk about it all here, but we're working on it.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I think we need to use these ARPA funds to support our local working families with roughly a third going to housing, a third for mental health and childcare, and a third for infrastructure and public safety. And again, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. Uh, we've got lots of great organizations already doing this and supporting them through grants and contracts. Will increase their capacity to get things done. Um, I serve on the county Brownfield Board. I know they could benefit um, from tackling some of these issues, our local law schools and ISVs, police. I I do think it's funny, a lot of the people against ARPA are also some of the same ones that took PPP loans from the government.
Yeah. Mr. Schmidt, you're you're um.
Thank you. I applaud the current county commission for going through the public process of getting the applications and seeing where that money should go. I think that's an excellent uh, use of of dollars. Uh, the also I would do infrastructure and also look at the public health department and our, what we're doing here in Grand Travers County and how that can be augmented.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. I would prioritize economic impacts of the pandemic and in particular the childcare desert that is in our community that was started well before the pandemic and it got much, much worse with during the pandemic and it hasn't recovered since. That affects not only providers who have gone out of business and their and their employees, the parents who are unable to go back to work, the working families, the folks who depend on them, whether it's going to the hospital or assistance in their homes or otherwise. This is a community issue and we have a huge role.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Yes, um, you know, some time ago, we did a community survey and infrastructure was at the top tier of the uh, concerns for our community. So that's definitely going to be a winner. Um, and also mental health services, we have seen an increase in the need for for mental health services. And um, there's a lot of things that we're working on that we're looking at that there's just too much, too much um, name with the time that's allotted. So I'll uh, leave that to the rest of you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, um, I don't know if this has been.
Hello? I didn't get to answer.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You you're right. Ms. Harris Kaiser, please respond and thank you.
I'd like to agree with Amanda Scott that we should divide our ARPA funds into three main areas. Uh, infrastructure, um, housing and of course, mental health. We know that anxiety and depression have risen to dangerous levels. Our children are dying of gunshot wounds more than any other cause. Mental health services are the foundation of health. So we need to improve them and provide them in Grand Travers County.
Thank you. Um, this has been like a bingo card for me to figure out who gets to talk next because I was trying to give everybody in a district the chance to start that question. But I'm afraid I left out Mr. Nelson for one of the responses. And so now is your chance, Mr. Nelson. I think it was the about broadband experience, um, broadband services.
Yes, and uh, coincidentally, my I my Zoom dropped off during the question and I heard some of the answers and then I thought you forgot me because I went away for a minute. Um, I agreed with a lot. I think that's a good example of something that all of us can collaborate on. It's not a Democrat or Republican issue. It is like electrification was years ago. There are many different ways. There's there's not just, it's not just wired, it's through the air, through the sky. And uh, we have some great opportunities to the USDA with low interest loans and some monies from the Fed and the state.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience and everyone for um, staying on top of all of this. Now, believe it or not, it's already time for closing statements. And we're going to start with Ms. Morris and you'll have ninety seconds for a closing statement. You'll have a thirty second um, warning and then I'll ask you to wrap up at um, at ninety seconds. So Ms. Morris.
I have to say that I, this is probably been the job that I have most enjoyed in my entire life of fifty five years. Um, what I enjoy about it is that I'm able to build relationships with people who have the resources so that when somebody comes to me with an issue, I can connect them to the person who can help them with that issue. And you know, I never forget that I work for the individual and for my township, my uh, my own desires, my own agendas, take a backseat in this job. And um, my biggest goal is really to just do the best I can to put as much positivity into our community as I can, and that's what I will continue to do. Um, and uh, I have enjoyed working with my um, fellow commissioners. I enjoy working with the public. I enjoy building the relationships, so. Um, but it's really not about me. It's about what I can take with. from that and give back to the community who was there for our family during a very rough time when we lost our daughter. This is a wonderful community, and so the opportunity to just give back has been an amazing experience.
Anne, you're muted. Ms. Harris Kaiser, please.
Thank you. I can live anywhere in the world, and I have. I've been fortunate to live in the United States, on the East Coast, in Africa and in Europe. And there is nowhere in the world that I would rather live than Grand Travers County. When my husband and I were able to move home to be closer to family in Long Lake Township, we were thrilled. Since that time, I've been very concerned about the ethics and what the priorities have been on our Board of Commissioners. If I am elected, I want to put people's lives first. Humanity matters. In setting policies, we need to ask, what good are we doing and what harm could result? And I want to make sure that we support the potential of every member of our community at whatever age to live a good life in Grand Travers County.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Flynn?
First of all, thank you so much for having all of us this evening. We have so much to offer here in Grand Travers County, but we have to be great stewards of both our county's natural and human resources. If we do not advocate for our seniors, our young families, and all constituents of our county, we, and we do not build a community where they can survive and they can thrive, then we will have a hollow community. We will be beautiful on the outside, but empty on the inside. While tourism is a wonderful way to support the foundation of our community, and we are lucky to have such a breathtakingly beautiful place to call home and for so, and for so many people wanting to come visit, we cannot, we must not make that our only priority. We must enact policy that does not only retain the tourism, but also supports the people who work in our restaurants, our shops, the teachers who dedicate themselves to our children, and the many employees in our area that make this gorgeous county what it is. Grand Travers County is, Grand Travers County must, Commission must work for these people. And this is what I will do when you vote for me as county commissioner for District Two. Thank you. Vote blue twenty, twenty-two.
Thank you. Ms. Koenig?
Yes, I just want to say that, um, having lived here for forty-five years, I've seen a lot of our leaders make such sound and great decisions that we are, all are benefiting from today. And there's been a few not-so-great decisions that we pay the price for. So I have a wisdom, this forward, future-looking, with knowing how it will affect us further down the line. We're going to unprecedented growth right now. We've had a lot of growth in the past, but right now it's unprecedented. And it's wonderful. We've worked hard for that growth. We've wanted that growth to this area, so we have to be smart and use the wisdom we have to, to embrace the growth. But the bottom line is the bottom line, and we must live within our means. We can't be spending a lot of money over on this or that. We have to cherish what we have. I want to work with this new board, where the board, I don't mean the new board, but the board that we have now, they've lowered taxes. They've reduced meli trades due to sufficient funding. Um, and the other thing is I'll preserve the uncommon character of Grand Travers County. Uh, working with this board of commissioners to continue tackling decades-old problems with, and new challenges with efficient and innovative and cost-saving solutions. I welcome growth and new opportunities while committed to fiscal responsibility and maintaining our Northern Michigan values and quality of life. Hope you vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh? Mr. Welsh, you're muted.
Um, Grand Travers County is an amazing place. It's, uh, it's been great to me. I came up from nothing here. I uh, at one time was working two, two, uh, jobs, one for seven, one for eight dollars an hour here. As a single parent, just struggling to get by, rubbing nickels together. And, um, because of, of this community and all that it has to offer, I was able to elevate myself out of that situation and, uh, raise an amazing kid in the process. And, um, I want to be able to use a position as commissioner to make sure that that opportunity still exists for people today. I think that, um, we have a great, we, we, we have a great budget surplus that needs maintained. Uh, we need to, uh, continue to look at ways that we can lower tax burden, especially uh, with the amount of inflation that's going on. And, um, we really have to continue to protect our precious natural resources. Um, so vote for me for District Three.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I ask that you vote for me on November eighth, if not before. Uh, this is the sample ballot. The absentee ballots should be in the mail on the next day. I think they mailed them out today in Traverse City. So that's early voting, folks. You can vote right away. I want to go back to the county commission and I want to finish some of the work that I did, uh, back in seventeen and eighteen. Uh, I gotta tell you, in sixteen, the board was all Republicans. And, uh, when I got elected, it was six Republicans and one Green. And I got along with everybody. I made friends. Cheryl Gore-Fallett is a friend, a family friend. We don't have to be so divisive. That's the part that keeps putting me on the ballot. I don't like the divisiveness. I don't like the negativity. And I still feel it even tonight. There's some, among some of you, that you're gonna, you know, have, have the fight, you know? Well, I don't think we need to do that. We can get along. Most of the decisions that are made at the county board level, people do agree on. It's a few things that set off sparks and become a lightning rod. But I tell you, I know how to get through that. I helped, uh, get, uh, harm reduction, a needle exchange in the county. Nobody would even believe it. I mean, even though we have it, people don't even believe it. That's very hard legislation to push through. And if it wasn't for me, it wouldn't have happened because I was able to persuade the other members how important it is to do that so that we don't have more hepatitis C. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
Thank you so much. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this. It's such a great resource to our community. Vote four-one-one dot org is a great way to learn more about candidates and issues. Uh, you can look up your district and everything that's on your ballot there, and thanks to League of Women Voters for offering that resource across the nation. I'm proud to be a lover and a fighter for our community's most righteous fights for public education, our environment, equal rights, and government transparency. I've had the privilege and honor of working creatively and passionately with so many people across Northern Michigan for many years, starting back when I served on the Empire Village Council more than fifteen years ago, and now as an elected city commissioner. I would love to represent you on the Grand Travers County Board and bring reasonable, thoughtful, and strong leadership to our county and continue to build the relationships that we have with our nonprofits, with our business community across the aisle to bring in diverse voices. Please use your voice, exercise your right to vote in this important election up and down the ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time this evening. Um, as I've shown, I have a lot of real-world experience, both personally and through my ten-plus years in the nonprofit and public sector. Uh, this has really helped you understand the real challenges that we're facing in our county. These aren't just numbers on a sheet of paper to me. These are real people and real faces and real stories. Uh, this isn't a reality TV show. This is people's neighborhoods and businesses and livelihoods. It's homes for our waitresses and our teachers. It's a solid workforce to run our local businesses and safe and affordable childcare for nieces and nephews. Now, my own son, who happens to be on a waitlist for six daycares right now. Uh, it's mental health care for all of us, uh, especially for our children. I think there's a lot wrong with what's been happening at all levels of our government. This isn't a political game. We've had enough of that. Uh, I've gotten in trouble for saying this before, but I think that government should be boring by nature. You know, we in government are political beings and we're bound to disagree sometimes. But as adults, we should also learn to listen with an open mind, uh, talk things out and compromise instead of bickering, avoiding, and shaming and getting nothing done. So, uh, I, I believe in service and community. I promise to do what's right for working families. Uh, I'll stop the drama and actually do the work that you should expect from your county commissioner. Uh, it's, it's time to put people over politics and get back to work. So a vote for me means a vote for hard work, respect, fresh ideas, and new energy. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Friday, I turned sixty. And, uh, that puts a guy in a position that you look, you look back in your life, and I've got, I've been since I, less than ten years old, been doing volunteer work. I've served on dozens of boards in this community. I moved away for two years and couldn't wait to get back. Uh, my wife for thirty-three years and I are here. We've raised our children here. My parents are still alive and they're living in Grand Travers County. I look at the guy in the mirror and I, and I answer to him. Did I do the right thing? Am I doing a good job? I look at my parents. I look at my children. I look at my fellow citizens. I love this community. Uh, tonight in this thing, of some of the things that come up like the NRA thing, even the people running for commission don't even understand that. That didn't happen, uh, in the last term. That, that's, that's a previous board. It wasn't this board. Commissioner Morris and I were involved in that. Uh, we brought a new attitude to the board and we, and I think we should be very proud, some of the things we've done. I'm, uh, I'm hoping to continue that job. And, uh, a lot of the issues that have come up in here, one of the issues brought up was a Lillaw County issue. Um, some of the issues that come up, there's a complete misunderstanding of what happens. That's how this, this job goes. You don't have all the, there's not behind-the-scenes stuff. This, this, there's a lot of thought goes into these things, and so I hope that you'll give me another chance. I've got, every township I serve, someone has contacted me from the board, the planning commission, from Fife Lake up to East Bay, Acme, and Union, and wanted to put a sign up in their yard. And I think that speaks to how good of a job I'm doing for the people I serve on a daily basis.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Andrews? Ms. Andrews, you're muted?
Thank you. So we've noted a, a variety of serious regional issues this evening. Our county is growing at unprecedented rates. Our local media has been reporting on the childcare shortage since at least two thousand seventeen. We've had an acute nursing shortage since before then. The lack of accessible housing for seniors and working families was discussed, uh, as a, as a challenge during the grand vision well over a decade ago. These have been festering since well before the pandemic hit, and they've gotten much worse. We need the county commission to get serious about working for our community. We need to elect the people who will dive in, who will seek out public input, who will listen to experts, who will ask community partners for help, and above all, they will put community first. And that's what you'll get when you vote for me, a hard-working, transparent, community-minded, never afraid to dive into incredibly complex issues, bring people together and find a reasonable path forward. Whether you vote absentee or in person, if you live in District Seven on the peninsula or northeast part of the city, please vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
I'd like to say thank you very much again to the League of Women Voters, Travers Media, and to all my fellow candidates here who have tossed their ring into the, their hat into the ring. Thank you for stepping up. This is my hometown. I grew up here. I've chosen to raise my family. This is where I've done, in the public sector, in the private sector, Traverse City, Grand Travers County, Northwestern Lower Michigan is my home. It's about moving the county forward, not thinking about the past, moving forward. And relationships and experience do matter. I've served in the minority. I've served under two Democratic governors. I've been able to get legislation moved under Governor Granholm and under Governor Whitmer, and also under Governor Snyder. I've served in the majority. The key is relationships and bringing people together. It was mentioned about the grand vision. When I served as vice chair of the county board, we created the grand vision, bringing those people on transportation issues together and finding solutions. We continue to do that. Relationships matter in making sure we get positive results. It's about people. It's about policy. It's about public service over party. And I would ask for the voters in the District Seven, the east side of the city and the peninsula, for your vote, either through the absentee ballot or on November eighth at the polls. And thank you again for the lead, putting this on.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum and thank the audience members for taking the time to participate. There are many experiences that I have that are unusual among this group of candidates, from working in a diverse, high-tech workforce to experience with rapid municipal growth. The current commission has spent too much time on non-county issues like gun sanctuary and anti-vax resolution that are not issues where the county commission can or should take any action. Because of the association with the Proud Boys, the gun sanctuary issue severely damaged the ability to recruit businesses and workers to the area. The AR-15 brandishing did too. The anti-vax resolution forced our school board to look to a different health department for advice during the worst month of the pandemic. We need a county commission that works on local issues instead of earning negative headlines in national newspapers. If you want more of the same, elect people from the old mold. If you want a commissioner that will address local problems, elect me. Please vote for me when you cast your ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Feschba?
Um, yeah, I, thanks for having this forum. I think it's been great. Um, I've never been in public office. I've been in, uh, elected positions in my local union, so I understand the problems that the commission faces with, uh, members of the community not understanding how things really work. It's, I know it's a trying job. My stepmother, she was the county commissioner, was Virginia Olds. My step-grandpa was Clarence Foss. I'm familiar with what, um, they went through. Some of the things they did were really beneficial to the county. They gave us, uh, uh, civilians. They were both Republicans. But some of the elected officials right now, I'm not so certain they want to keep the pavilions. There's things in the government that need to stay in the government to help better the whole group of people in the community. And then there's other things that need to be privatized. But, um, I hope to, uh, get elected. I would like your vote. I'll work very hard to help the whole community, not just myself. I have no dog in the hunt as far as anything for myself other than public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, full disclosure, I'm running on a post, so I guess that makes me the candidate-elect. So I'd really like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity and all the support staff, as well as the audience and my colleagues. I think it's great that almost everybody showed up, and so that's just a good commitment, a good level of commitment. And I look forward to working with whomever may win here come November. Also, and parting, I'd like to do, uh, say this, that as people who are trying to become elected to office, that we are elected to represent our communities, not to lead them, or to do their bidding, not ours. And so as we move forward, there's all these party politics that people are talking about. I feel that, and some of you probably remember this from when we were kids, that if you want to solve the global problems, you know, you act locally while you're thinking globally. Again, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone.
Thank you so much, candidates, for being part of this forum tonight and for your interest in public service. Your participation tonight allows voters to learn about your positions on issues and problems that you may face if elected to the county commission. Thank you also to tonight's audience. The candidates in the League of Women Voters appreciate that you took the time to expand your knowledge to be an informed voter. Thanks to all of you who submitted questions for our candidates. I think there were some very, um, thoughtful questions that required thoughtful answers. Um, finally, thanks to Traverse Area Community Media, especially Matt Kern, without whom this event could not take place. It's quite a complicated process to manage fourteen candidates, timekeepers, and moderator. So thank you, Matt. You can tell your friends about this forum, which will be shown in coming days on TV, Channel One. on TV Channel 189 in Northwest Lower Michigan and will be available on the League of Women Voters' Grand Travers Area Facebook page. So you can watch it later and tell your friends to do so as well. For more information about candidates running for office and for ballot proposals, as well as for information about voter registration and the process of voting, visit the League of Women Voters website. It is vote411.org. That's vote411.org or the Michigan Secretary of State website for voting information. And most importantly, don't forget to vote either by absentee very soon or in the near future or in person on or before November 8th. Thank you again for your time.